Welcome. It's always great to see a good crowd here. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on September 17th, 2024, and ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I'll ask Commissioner Gass to do the invocation and will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God, thank you for the day and thank you for each and every person here. And thank you for all that you do and the beautiful day you've given us. And prepare our hearts tonight and give us discernment and bless our time together. We love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, before we get started, the first thing on the agenda is public comments. We have a number of people here that want to make public comments. So I'm just going to take them in the order that I have. I would just remind those making public comments that you have three minutes. And just to make sure that everybody remains respectful and with the right decorum. And please state your name and whether or not you're a city resident and any group that you might represent. So I'll start out with Ms. Simpson, Tina Simpson.
Good evening. My name is Tina Simpson. I formerly lived at 121 Fountain Avenue. I belong to Jefferson Street Area Association. I have been a member there for many years. I am here regarding the 200 Fountain Avenue rezoning. I understand that it's already been approved and everything. I would like to request that the commissioners table it for another time. I know it's a delay. But I feel that the last planning commissioner meeting that they had, the public was not allowed to speak. I don't understand why to voice their concerns. I know four or five of us showed up at that meeting. They did not even give the chance to speak, to give our points across. I do know that all the members of the planning commission were not there to vote. I don't know what the rules were on that. But I am asking, if at all possible, that we can table this until we're going to find an attorney to help us with the situation. And we didn't get notification until Friday afternoon. So we didn't have a whole lot of time to scramble to get everybody notified of JSAA or even get an attorney at this late of notice. So I'm asking that it be tabled to another time. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have an attorney here tonight if there's any questions that might be able to answer some more technical questions, but we'll get to that. Next is Terry Coscarelli.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Terry Coscarelli and my husband is Dr. William Coscarelli. We reside at 220 Fountain Avenue where we bought our home in 2003, moved in in 2005. We share a property line with Nathan Meyer. He's just not Mr. Meyer to me, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to call him Nathan. When we decided to move to Paducah, we were Illinois residents. I was a school superintendent there and my husband was a professor at Southern Illinois University. We loved Paducah. We came to Paducah often. And so we made a decision as we got on in our careers that we wanted to live in Paducah. And in particular, we fell in love with Fountain Avenue. We raised our daughter here. We retired here. We made some of the best friends of our lives here. The home where Nathan resides now was formerly the home of Dorothy and Joe Turner. And the house in question on the corner was Lena Smith's home. And we were very good friends with Lena. As the years went by and we sat on porches and we shared birthdays and they watched our daughter grow up and we became part of that neighborhood, not just those two homes, but other homes on Fountain and Jefferson. We became committed to the neighborhood. And so that's our interest in this. And that alone has nothing to do with property value. It has nothing to do with legal terms. Our last petition that we sent in was taken apart legally. I will just tell you, that's how we felt. We assumed by Nathan's sister, who's an attorney. And it was taken apart point by point by point of our opinions and our feelings, even how we signed our names. And so, you know, we had to take a breath and say, ooh, this is not neighborly. Do we need to get an attorney? Do we need an attorney so we can take apart the take apart and it can go back and forth and tit for tat and how it becomes? And that's how attorneys are trained. Folks, we're not attorneys. We're neighbors. For that house to become short-term rental is heartbreaking to us. We were at Lena's funeral with her family. We were at Dorothy Turner's funeral with her family. These are people we know and love. These are our neighbors. And we believe it's a slippery slope when you take that beautiful little home on the corner and you turn it into a rental house. And when we first started talking to people about this, everyone thought, oh, it'll be a cute little B and B on the corner. That'll be cute. This is not about a bed and breakfast. This is about a short-term rental. And I have the definitions here. If anybody wants to see what that can be and what that can become. And we're awfully afraid of that slippery slope that this is going down for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy Ashton? Mr. Ashton?
I'm Troy Ashton and I'm a resident at 203 Fountain Avenue, just across the street from 200 Fountain Avenue. I sent a quick slide deck earlier today to Josh Summers to forward over to you. It was just a boil down of my thoughts regarding 200 Fountain. I don't know if you received it or didn't receive it, but I'll sum it up. Most of it was content that you, city leaders, had helped put together, like the city comprehensive plan. And there was a particular slide deck that was amalgamation of different words. And this is where I have to get my notes out because I'm a fellow that relies on notes and not strictly memory. But what it is, is all it is, is an amalgamation of words like safe, vibrant, friendly, affordable, thriving, beautiful, clean, diverse, active. And the list goes on. Well, that's what we want the city to be. And I'm 100% agreement with this work. And I believe 200 Fountain and R1 checks all the boxes to be all of those things. One of the first things that I want to say is I took a look at the city website and this has to do with fiscal year 2025 budget. Well, the first line on there has to talk about, this includes funding for city commissioner priorities, including $1 million for housing initiatives. I'm 100% in alignment with that, too. I think that's money well spent. And I like that my tax dollars are going in that direction. Because what I've heard a lot of is a lack of affordable housing in the area. This will bring me to my next point. Next point has to do with, if you do a quick search on short-term rentals, and I have nothing against short-term rentals, but if you do a quick search of its effects on the communities, what you'll see is it drives up the cost of housing and that contributes to the problem of affordable housing. So, you know, in my mind, keeping it as an R1 as it is right now and not changing it to a neighborhood service zone is a no-brainer. And then what I will say is my-
Just a few seconds left, sir.
Thank you. My service on the Board of Adjustments, I have come to learn that oftentimes when you're out of non-conforming, allotments are made for conformity. As a matter of fact, just recently, 129 Fountain, just kitty corner, we made sizing allotment so that it could be in R1 and have a home built there to lessen the housing problem. Thanks for the extra time. Sorry for going over.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Jack Berry?
Evening, commissioners. My name is Jack Berry. I live at 319 Fountain Avenue. And I'm going to back up a little bit, sort of like what Terry did. We were brought to Paducah when I was in the Coast Guard. And I guess we transferred here in 1987 and we stayed until 92. And we lived in the property, I guess you could say, behind Nathan's home across the alley at whatever the address is. Anyway, very nice two-story brick home and we liked the neighborhood quite a bit. We moved away and were gone for six years and had an opportunity to come back and work for a local company, which we did. And not without considerable discernment, I guess you could say, since I had two kids in high school. Anyway, we finished raising those two children and a third here. And when we decided to move back in 98, we chose that area because we liked it a lot. We liked the older homes. We liked the folks that were there. There was a bit more crime at that time. Nonetheless, that was our neighborhood. We liked our neighbors and we lived there. And like Terry and Bill, we were friends with Nathan's Lena Smith and the Turners. As a matter of fact, that little community is pretty close-knit. And if you look at the sign entrance, it says Fountain Avenue Neighborhood. And that's what we wanted, a neighborhood where we can see one another regularly on a regular basis. And during the planning commission meeting, the first one, most of those individuals there agreed with that and that transience coming and going doesn't foster a neighborhood. And we're opposed. I'm opposed. Also a member of Jefferson Street Association, but I'm really here kind of as a concerned neighbor. And we would like to see that home remain R1. And if... Anyway, that's about all I have to say right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Bill Coscarelli?
Hi, I'm Bill. I live at 220 Fountain Avenue. I'm in the neighborhood and I'm associated, my start button, with Jefferson Group. I want to talk about some structure to all of this. This petition was brought forward and the commission group, the zoning group, voted to deny it. And in the course of that discussion, Gail Kahler said, when she was asked, well, do we make the decision? Somebody said, do we make this decision? She said, no, 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 that's the city commission's job. They make the decision. We make the recommendation. So we have four, two votes to deny. And then all of a sudden, a mail letter came and said, oh, there needs to be another meeting. We find that there has to be finding of fact. Here's the meeting scheduled. It's like, wait a minute here. Where does this come from? How come nobody talked about findings of fact at the last meeting? So we came to the meeting and the attorney was there. And he said, well, you can't just vote no. You have to have findings of fact. And we all went, findings of fact? And people were like, I don't know, what's that? Well, finally, the attorney said, well, you know, here's some examples of the findings of fact. And so in the course of that period of findings of fact, people were going, and this would be on the video if you watch it. If I vote no, does that mean yes? No, no, no. If you vote yes, it means no, he can't do that. I mean, it was just confusion on the process of all this. We responded at that meeting with a document that I believe you received, dealing with two things that were findings of fact that were specified by the attorney. The attorney did not say legal issues. The attorney did not say procedural issues. The attorney said findings of fact. For example, residential areas should not be zoned so they are non-conforming. That's a finding of fact, according to the attorney. And when I had the city send me, you know, a copy of the zoning, I'll pass it sort of that way. And that way, you can see in your own packet, I believe you have this, that turning that house, Lena's house, into a neighborhood service zone breaks the whole string of houses along the way. The other thing that it does is it opens the door for businesses to come in, barber shops, whatever. The second finding of fact that we started with is, which Troy alluded to, a Paducah strategic goal, investment in the improvement of our housing stock to help grow our community. Well, you take a house that sold for about $100,000 off the... That's less per square foot than we were doing when we built the Fountain Avenue project. And so that's a really affordable piece of property, I guarantee you. Think about somebody who graduates from a medical program and moves down here in nursing. They'll be there in a second. So I got no seconds left. There are additional responses to all of that. We responded to the findings that we were told to. And we had no idea why nobody talked about the findings in the first meeting. It almost felt like a blindside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coscarelli. Okay, Daryl Duncan?
Good evening. My name is Daryl Duncan. I live at 2007 Jefferson Street. I'm with the Jefferson Street Association. I'm the president. One of the things that concerned us was finding out about this, well, the organization on Friday, which was late Friday. So by the time we got to reading it, or I did, wasn't much time to do anything. So we tried to contact some attorneys around and nobody could be here. So the first concern we had was that if we just delayed it to the next meeting to give us a chance to look at... And as I heard just now, a lot of people have done a lot of work on this. And it did kind of seem like the planning commission, maybe, why did they take the vote on something that was this emotional? And not all the members were even there when they did the meeting. So we were just concerned if we could not get this tabled until the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. We've got one more. Nathan Myers?
Hello, my name is Nathan Myers. I live at 212 Fountain Avenue. And I own the property that so many people have showed up to support on, 200 Fountain Avenue. As I understand it, the commission's seen all the evidence from the previous meetings, everything that's been submitted there. So won't reiterate or rehash all that. I just wanted to come here to say I appreciate everyone's, you know, passion and investment in the community. I totally understand why people are, you know, very invested in keeping the status quo, protecting the neighborhood. But I just wanted to come and say, you know, that's my goal and interest as well. The goal for this rezone and conditional use was not to, you know, sow discord or try to ruin the neighborhood or something. I just see it as a way to promote tourism in the city, to allow people to experience the great neighborhood we're in. And as I mentioned in there, I will reiterate this part. I live next door, so, you know, if there's anything that happens, I'm going to be right there on it. I want to protect the neighborhood. I want to keep things nice and as good as it can be, I guess. But anyway, I know you guys have the evidence. The last thing I want to say is there has been a lot of confusion. I totally understand why people might want to table this. I will say, you know, we started this back in March initially submitting this. So here we are, six months down the road, still talking about what I would have thought was a pretty straightforward process. And I do feel sorry for folks if they feel like their voices weren't heard or they didn't have a chance to respond. But the processes were followed. And as I understand it, the vote's not being taken tonight. This is just an introduction of the ordinance or a motion, as I understand it. So I would request that we continue with at least introducing. And then in the meantime, at the next meeting, if something comes up, if people want to look into things and introduce it there, that's fine. But I'd request we, you know, move forward with what's planned and before the vote next month, we can, you know, look into those things. But just to close out, I'm invested in the community. I like living there. I want to see it maintained. I want to keep the property up. I've already put a lot of time, a lot of my own money and resources into trying to fix things up, the house I live in, 212 Fountain Avenue, in addition to 200 Fountain Avenue. So, you know, my goal here is to make things better, not to make things worse. But I appreciate your time in taking this case up. And thanks again.
Thank you, Nathan. So we're going to work through the regular agenda, but we will get to this item and talk about it further. So the next item is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, our items on the consent agenda are considered to be a routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner would like an item pulled for separate discussion. City clerk?
Approved minutes for the August 27, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting, receiving filed documents, personnel actions, a municipal order accepting the bid for sale to the city of one crew cab dump truck in the total amount of $96,149 for use by the Public Works Department, Street Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order accepting the bid for sale to the city of one three-quarter ton pickup truck in the total amount of $46,989 for use by the Parks Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order approving a reimbursement agreement with Paxton Park Golf Board, DBA Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course for the purchase of a greens mower in the amount of $50,000.
Still moved?
Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, I'll ask the city clerk, please, read the first municipal order that we have before us tonight.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to receive grant funds through the National Park Service Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program in the amount of $750,000 for subgrants for the rehabilitation of historic properties in the Central Business District, Market House District, and South Side Community.
Still moved?
Second.
Hi, Hope. Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. So wonderful dues I get to get up here and share tonight. So as she said, this is a National Park Service Paul Bruin grant. It is a three-year grant for $750,000. And of that, $650,000 will go directly toward local buildings within those three areas that she mentioned in the municipal order. It's the Paducah Downtown Commercial District, the Market House District, and the South Side Community for buildings that are on the National Register of Historic Places or are eligible. If they're eligible, they would need to be on the National Register by the end of the grant period. We are responsible for, after, if the grant is approved, of putting an application process in place that will... The local buildings will be able to apply for this funding. So we will have applications and that will all go out at the same time. That is something that we will be working on as part of this grant. The owners of the buildings will be able to ask for up to $100,000. Of the $650,000, our goal is to do at least seven buildings. We took an extra $100,000 of the budget to contract, if needed, for an outside organization to help support those grantees in the environmental process. So we have $650,000 for the buildings themselves and then $100,000 to help provide support for those. Because, you know, we assume that some of these individuals may have never been through that environmental process. So we'll be able to help provide them some extra support for that. But yeah, that's, you know, hopefully going to bring... I mean, the goal of this grant is really to spur economic development, to use it as leverage, to bring in additional developers and fundings for some of these buildings downtown. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity and definitely- So I think it's a fantastic opportunity and definitely a community benefit for Paducah. And yeah.
Well, it supports the commission priorities, you know, on preserving our historical assets. So now, the way I understand it, we get $750,000, is that $250,000 a year? Is that the way it's going to come?
Well, no, it won't come like that. It's a reimbursement grant, so we will be drawing down funds as we spend them.
I got you.
And then, once we go through that application process and approve those projects, that will go to the National Park Service. They will also be reviewing those applications and proposed projects for their approval as well. So there are several steps we will have to go through before they can actually start working on their buildings, but that's all built into the grant timeline.
Okay, so we approve, but then they have to approve as well?
Yes.
Okay. And we can determine the level of grants that we want to give out? Is that right?
That's correct.
With a cap of $100,000?
With a cap of $100,000.
Cap of $100,000.
But if we wanted to do $10,000, $65,000 grants, we could do that, or some facsimile thereof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We, I mean, there are guidelines, but there's also some leeway in that, in how we structure the grant application process. So that's something that we'll be working on.
Well, it's, I mean, the way I understand it, it's a very competitive grant, so, you know, I'm glad we've got it, and looking forward to the process, so I think it's great.
It's exciting.
Congratulations. Thank you for giving it for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's exciting.
Any other comments? We all good? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Okay, the next item is reimbursement of an IDA activity going out at the triple rail site. I'll let the city clerk, please, read it, and then we'll discuss it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order approving reimbursement to the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority in an amount not to exceed $958,404, and authorizing the mayor to execute any documents related to same.
Still moved?
Second.
I'll let you start out. I'll fill in.
Mayor Commission, as you're aware, you know, one of the largest areas for development that we have in our county is this triple rail site. It's been on, you know, several companies' radars for a number of years. We've really not hit at it yet, but one of the things that the IDA discussed was to be able to clear and grub that property so we could show better, and that was some of the feedback that, from site selectors and things, that we're looking at that, that that would help market that property. So the IDA and the county has also taken action on this. The IDA had $850,000 from a recent sale of property that they put towards the cost of this clearing and grubbing. The remainder of the balance of that is being split, if you approve tonight, 75% by the county and 25% from the city. And the reason that we have a not to exceed, because we did have some contingencies built in that, in case there were some unforeseen that occurred, but if they didn't, then we would not be having to fund the full amount. And so that's what, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. You know, one of the things that the city does, city and county both, we work very hard together on economic development. I sit on the GPED board, and we meet monthly, trying to attract businesses to Paducah-McCracken County. And one of the things that we've discovered, you know, is that, you know, we've had a couple of situations where a company came here, looked at our land, liked it, liked the location. If you've ever been out to our triple rail site, it's where three railroads come together, and it's also located on the Ohio River. So the location out there makes it very ideal. However, it's not even close to shovel-ready. And so a lot of these other communities have, you know, have forged ahead and gotten property that, and cleared and grubbed it so that it is ready when a business comes in. And so, you know, after a lot of discussion, we decided that this was an investment we needed to make on this property. So it's a great piece of property. We're clearing and grubbing, I think, 250 acres, and it's very important to the community going forward. It's a great spot we're eventually going to hit. It's ideal for manufacturing, not small projects, not 50-person companies. It's really ideal for a larger manufacturing site. So we're talking about, you know, 300, 500, 700 jobs. And so this is what we believe is required to make this land ready to go. So I've been involved in it, and the property is in the county, it's not in the city. So, you know, hence the 75-25 split.
I just comment, just, you made a good comment about this isn't in the city, it's quite a few miles from the city. It's really an example of how the city steps up to try to do what's good for the community. And so the way this is arranged, I don't think we'll ever get any payroll tax off of it, so it's not like we're going to be getting money back on it, but it is good for Western Kentucky. And I just think people need to recognize what the city does to support Western Kentucky and jobs and that sort of thing, so.
You know, maybe I could give you a little bit more background. We did, there was a big project a couple of years ago out there, and there was a discussion about what the benefit to the county and the city were, because it's so far out in the county. So we did what's called an implant study. And that's a very detailed analysis, making lots of assumptions on number of jobs, where people would live, where they would eat, you know, where they would spend money. And what we ended up coming up with was about a 75-25 split, when you look at the benefits to the county versus the city. So there was, you know, it wasn't, you know, we just put our finger up, you know, and assumed that this was a split. There was some math to the way that we came up with the numbers, so. But you're right, Commissioner Smith, I mean, you know, we're going to benefit, everybody's going to benefit, and we're going to step up on these projects.
Yeah, I'm just saying that for the record.
Right.
And also, the state has put money for projects to be out in that area, too, for road development, and as part of their plan.
Well, the state has, you know, we've gotten $3.5 million for a grant out there on a river, a river port, River Port West. You know, we have a river port right down here on the river. But the state has invested in that river port out there, and as the city manager said, on construction roads and roads, so, you know, there's a lot of people that are investing in that property, and we're going to hit a project, so. Okay, I'll ask the city clerk. Did I miss anybody? I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to please read the next item.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order approving an employment agreement between the city of Paducah and Carol Galt for employment as planning director and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Still moved?
Second.
So, Mayor Commission, you know, a couple of months ago, we reached out and asked Ms. Galt to come on in an interim basis, to take on some leadership roles within the city in one of our very, probably one of the most busiest departments, a lot of the commission priorities is in there. And, you know, to no one's surprise, Carol's stepped up to meet that challenge, so much so that we didn't want to wait to six months to bring forward, and we have come to an agreement, and we bring this forward for you tonight, to take the interim tag off of Ms. Galt and name her as the next Director of Planning for the city.
Comments?
I think it's a great idea.
So I'm just, I'm tickled to death. I mean, I, you know, from a planning perspective, one of the things that I've experienced as mayor since I got elected was that it seems like the majority of our initiatives, I mean, we have folks here tonight, you know, talking about, you know, zoning ordinance, but it's just so many of our initiatives go through the planning department. And strong leadership is really critical to our future, and as I've told Ms. Galt, you know, this is really just the first step. We want to continue to invest in the people in that department so that we can continue to grow. So development, neighborhood development, economic development with developers, all of that goes through our planning department. So it's critical that we have the right people and the right staff on board, and so I'm tickled to death to welcome Ms. Galt tonight. Call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we read this, first reading of this ordinance two weeks ago. It's our proposed tax rates for FY 2025, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read them.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance fixing the levies and rates of taxation on all property in the city of Paducah, Kentucky, subject to taxation for municipal purposes and for school purposes for the period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, with the purposes of said taxes hereunder defined. Purpose: General fund of the city. Real property rate per 100.264. Personal property except inventory rates per 100.356. Motor vehicle and watercraft rates per 100.390. For school purposes, Paducah Junior College, real estate .014. Personal property except inventory .013. Motor vehicles and watercraft .031. Total tax rate per $100, real property .278. Total tax rate per 100, personal property .369. Total rate per 100, inventory .000. Total tax rate per 100, motor vehicle and watercraft .421. Property taxes levied herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due of less than $2,000, the payment shall be due on November 1, 2024, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2024. In the case of all other tax bills, payments shall be in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November 1, 2024, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2024. The second half payment shall be due on February 1, 2025, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February 28, 2025.
Still moved?
Second. Discussion? No discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, I'll please read the next ordinance.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the city of Paducah to collect taxes for the Paducah Independent School District for the period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Board of Education of the city of Paducah, Kentucky pursuant to the authority vested in it under its charter and under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, has adopted resolution and budget levying an ad valorem tax on all real property in said city subject to taxation for school purposes. Pursuant to said resolution, the Board of Education budgets and levies the following taxes for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, an ad valorem tax of 87.0 cents on each $100 assessed valuation of all real property subject to taxation for school purposes in the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and an ad valorem tax of 87.0 cents on each $100 assessed valuation of all personal property subject to taxation for school purposes in the city of Paducah, Kentucky. For the support and maintenance of the public schools of said city shall be collected by the city for the Board of Education. Purpose: Paducah Independent School District, real estate .874, rates per 100. Personal property including inventory .874, rate per 100. Taxes authorized to be collected shall be due and payable as set forth in the ordinance for setting tax levies for the city of Paducah for FY 2025 as adopted.
Still moved?
Second. So just to be clear, this is taxes that we collect on behalf of the independent school system. And, you know, they are on people's tax bills. I think I just have to say this every year, because people get their tax bills, and they look at their taxes, and they see this number, and sometimes they equate that number with city taxes. And there is a significant portion of the tax bill that is for the independent school system, and that's what, you know, that's what these rates are for. So just a bit of a reminder.
Right, and it is as part of that reminder, Mayor. It's also, it is the Board of Education that sets those rates, and it's not this body, even though we have to adopt it for collecting purposes. The Board of Education has already had their meetings and adopted those rates.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, please call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two ordinances to introduce tonight. The first one is a utility easement, and I'll ask the city clerk, please, read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement between the city of Paducah and TC3 LLC, owner of property located at 723 Cruz Avenue. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah to accept a permanent utility easement between TC3 LLC and the city of Paducah for and in consideration of $1 for an area located on the west side of Cruz Avenue and south of Mary Ann Drive.
Still moved?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. So, let me see. I've got the plat pulled up here that we, so we closed a, okay, we closed an alley portion across this property, and then afterwards, we became aware that there was some storm water infrastructure under there. So the property owner has been very kind and has let us put a, just an easement across there in case we were to ever need to go in and do any kind of work.
Okay.
So it's just that, it was an oversight on the plat, and we are now just correcting that. So it was, they're giving us the easement, cost us $1, and this is just to clean up the plat.
Well, that's very nice of that property owner.
It was very nice of that property owner.
You know, so we need to send him or her a Christmas card.
I'm sorry.
I think you could have gotten it for 50 cents, though.
I know. I've always been a pushover, so we should only get a dollar. Only get a dollar.
That was a good one. That was a good one. I was trying to say what a nice guy he was, and you were trying to squeeze him down.
That's what we're doing here.
Okay.
And Mayor Commission, if for any chance that we would have to go in and do work, then we would also have to put the property back into the condition as we found it, and so the property owner is not out from that as well, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Okay, and the second ordinance that we are introducing, with the emphasis on introducing tonight, is the rezoning of 200 Fountain Avenue, and I'll ask the city clerks, please, read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ord- "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Amending the Paducah Zoning Map." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "This Ordinance amends the Paducah zoning map, which is incorporated into city code via Section 126-31B, to reflect that the property located at 200 Fountain Avenue was rezoned by operation of law from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to NSZ Neighborhood Services Zone."
So moved.
Second.
Josh?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Madam City Clerk. So I want to keep my remarks tonight short and high level because you all have been made very well aware of this case and been immersed in the record. So on May 6 of this year, we received a petition to rezone 200 Fountain Avenue from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to NSZ, which is Neighborhood Services Zone. And that is the zoning that encompasses the majority of the Fountain Avenue historic district. The Planning Commission also considered a short-term rental as part of that rezoning request, which is allowed by KRS 100.2025. At that meeting, the recommendation that was voted on was to adopt a resolution approving the Neighborhood Services Zone, and that did fail on a vote of four to two. Since it was voted down in denial, we needed to make findings of fact and also make a definitive recommendation to this body, which was not done at that meeting. So at the next meeting on June 6, we put that agenda item back on the agenda for the specific reason of forwarding this body a definitive recommendation of approval or denial, and also the findings of fact. At that meeting, it was approved, and you will find a resolution signed by Chairman Wade in your packets for the zone change and the affirmative to NSZ. Afterwards, we had received a request from a neighboring property owner for the Board of Commissioners to hear and decide the zone change, which is at the point where we're at tonight. So anything above and beyond tonight is more of a legal standpoint and legal findings, and so Ms. Blankenship is here to guide you all through those questions if you have any. But I would be glad to answer any questions you all may have about the history or timeline or the 30,000-foot overview.
Well, I, I think I might have a question. We've heard from, we've been given a lot of information about this. We've even watched the video, and we've seen all that went on in, in that video. And so we have residents here tonight who have expressed their sentiments and their concerns, concerns and sentiments that I had even after beginning to look at all of this. They've asked that we table this, giving hopefully us more time, perhaps to talk about this some more and to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. And even though it is an ordinance introduction tonight, what are the legal ways in which we can actually table this, giving us more time to discuss?
Thank you, Commissioner. Being a legal question, I'll defer to Ms. Blankenship.
I wasn't talking to you anyway, no.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager. So your, your question, Reverend Henderson, you, certainly you always can table an ordinance anytime one comes before you all. If you decide to do so, you would have to vote to do so, but you certainly can, and someone can implement a motion, make a motion to do that and, and vote on that if that's what you decide to do. So that, if that answers your question on that.
It does, so I guess my, my question would be, would it be in order for?
Well, I think we need to.
Okay. If, if you don't mind, and Stacy can fill in legal, I think there is confusion about what we're talking about here tonight. So just recall that the Planning Commission made their recommendation, this body, you know, there's, there's several things that this body could have done. This body could have had its own hearing, had its own findings of fact, come to its own conclusion of law. You didn't choose to do that. This body could have looked at the record and then had its own decision based on that record, or this body could have let it sit for 90 days, and at the end of 90 days, their decision by the Planning Commission became a matter of law. So you would not be able to table their decision. The only thing you would be talking about tabling tonight is amending the zoning map. And so their decision became a matter of law at the expiration of 90 days. And so the, the, what you have before you tonight as an introduction is just to amend the zoning map to reflect that matter of law that came into place 90 days post the decision and the appeal to this body. So.
I, I think I understood that, but.
But it doesn't, I mean, so, so it doesn't go back and revert the Planning Commission's decision?
Okay.
Yeah, you would not be able to, to do that.
I think what we ought to do is maybe, Stacy, you could explain where we are in the process, as Darren described the 90 days, and, and so there's 30 days for appeal.
Right, so following this, the, the finality of, of the, the decision by the Planning Commission, there's a 30-day appeal process. That decision by the Planning Commission is, I understand it, was final on September 12th, because that was the 90 days after the decision was made. So technically, that decision is final, and the only ordinance you all have ahead in front of you today is just to amend the zoning map to reflect what that final decision is. Okay? So, you know, you can, you can table it, and, and I was just answering your question, you certainly can table it, but it, it doesn't change any of the process here. All it does is just delay the decision to change the map officially. It's been changed already, it's just making sure that the public knows, because you want your maps to reflect what the decisions are.
I, I guess the only thing that I really want, I guess, to go on record is that we've had several residents to come before us about zoning issues. And I feel like every time they've come, we have just kind of pushed them off, okay? And we just kind of gone along. And I think, you know, obviously, you know, when we did this, I was all for it, but again, hearing the residents come and express the same concerns that I brought out, brought up initially to our attorney, and I guess you eventually called me, I'm hearing it now and I'm like, well, yeah, come on, folks, we need to try, I'm concerned that the residents keep leaving us, keep leaving the, the, the meetings, feeling as if we have let them down. Does that make any sense?
Yes.
Stacy, can you explain, though, typically, these issues don't come to the City Commission, they are decided by the Planning Commission, and they don't come to our level. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and they don't come to our level.
Typically, they have never, they've always been decided by the Planning Commission, which is by the law, the way I understand it's supposed to be done.
Well, so the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Commission, but the City Commission typically, because, by operation of law, if you don't, you have to have a, everyone here, and you have to vote by majority vote to overturn the Planning Commission, if that's what you want, choose to do. But what typically happens is nothing happens, because when you don't do that decision to overturn the, the decision of the Planning Commission, then it automatically becomes law. So that's how you typically handle it, because that's your, in, in, I assume, your minds, that's why you appoint the Planning Commission and the Commissioners, is to have these hearings, determine what's best for the city, and, and then you, you, you trust their decisions are accurate, absent something otherwise. And so that's how it's normally been handled.
Well, I think we all saw the video, and we saw, at least I saw, what y'all sent me. Maybe it was different on yours. I saw the confusion going on in that meeting. Folks, folks didn't know what they were voting on or anything of that nature. Then we come back, or they came back a few days later or a few weeks later, and now they've got some folk at this meeting that weren't present at the last meeting, and now they vote to approve. And I, I just try to be a straight shooter, to me, it causes me to have a raised eyebrow.
Why was there so much confusion?
Well, you, I saw, you saw the bit, because people didn't know what they were voting on.
I know, and I don't understand that, because they are appointed, and they are, I mean, they receive a lot of training, so it's just.
State law.
It's telling to me why that they were so confused.
Well, it was on the houses. They got confused on the Airbnb and the house.
And so, and that was the confusion, so.
And the one commissioner who voted no and came back and voted yes, I did call him, and he said, "That was all." He said, "I did not, the way they, they presented that," and.
So then that's on us. If we, if we didn't present it, or the, the Board of Adjustments or whomever, if they didn't present it correctly, for, even for the board members to vote correctly, is that not?
Well, maybe, I may be oversimplifying. So we can introduce an ordinance to overturn.
So no, no, the, right now, as we sit here, that, that residence is NSZ, as we sit here. All you all are doing is changing the map to reflect that. The only way you can change it would be, it would have to go back through the process again to get that rezoned back to R1 if that's what.
Back through the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, who instigates that process?
Well, it would be the exact same process, way, the process that has gone before, you can, you know, it can be implemented that, several ways the statute sets that out, so by.
What does the statute say, though?
Well, the statute says it can originate by the property owner, or the City Commission can originate it by, by, you know, putting in a request for it to be rezoned.
Do we have to have any more specific, I've heard that, that phrase mentioned, findings of fact, to do that? Do we have to have new findings of fact?
I don't, I don't think you, no, because you're not going to have a hearing on it. It would just be, you know, you implement that process all over again. They would have to have, go all through that same exact process again, and findings of fact would have to come out of the Planning Commission.
Well, the, the Planning Commission, it'd go back to them.
It would be the exact same process to rezone it back to R1 if that's what, you know, is decided to do. But that, this decision tonight by, by this commission would not have any effect whatsoever on whether or not.
Well, let me say this.
That property is R1 or, or NSZ.
Okay, so even if we, if we, we aren't voting tonight, but if we were voting tonight and we voted in favor, we could still go back to what you're saying to overturn that.
Yes, because you're just changing the map to reflect what it already is.
Let me say this, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the next step should be. I think it's been suggested that we table this tonight, even though the tabling this decision really doesn't affect what's law today, but as a show of good faith, I think we should table it. And I would like to make a motion that we do table it.
So move. Second, 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 second. Are you making the motion?
I am.
I'm seconding that.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. So I want to ask one other question, because I know that it became, it became law on September 10th, but there, or whatever the date was. So there was a third.
So as, as I understand, so that 90-day expires, so on 90, on the 91st day, that's when the next clock starts for the 30-day window for an appeal to be made to Circuit Court on the Planning Commission's ruling. And so that, that day, I believe, was not, beginning on 9/11, and then the next 30 days, counting 9/11, would be the appeal period to file an appeal with Circuit Court. That's, that's my understanding.
I'm not for sure the date, and I would be uncomfortable saying it, because I don't want anybody relying on me later and saying we missed the deadline. There is 30 days after the final decision, and I don't know the date exactly, so.
Okay, so here's, here's what I'm going to say. I'm, I'm just going to say that, you know, then citizens and the commission, you know, citizens have a decision as to whether or not they want to appeal that to Circuit Court, and I guess as long as they file something within that period of time, then that would start the process. At the same time, we could decide, I, I guess, whatever the process would be to take this back through and go through this process again. I, I don't know what that process is. I, I, I don't understand it. I don't think it's been explained at this point thoroughly, but I think, you know, having some time to investigate that probably makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's fine with, fine with us. We can certainly give you some more information about that process.
And one of the things we can do, you know, is, in going back through the process, we can make sure that, you know, that we're careful, that we got everybody on the Planning Commission there, you know, and that we make sure that we, we go through this process. There's no guaranteed outcome, but we go through this process in a, in an orderly manner and make sure that it's handled without any question about what the process, because I think there are some questions.
Absolutely. I agree.
So.
The public knows about it.
Right. Whatever the process is that we follow to make sure that the public knows, we'll make sure that that is part of the process.
I just have one question, if I may, and the attorney may be able to answer this, is, from my understanding, if I, if I'm thinking this correctly, is the 90 days was from June 6, and it was over September 12. We were notified on 13th, so we could appeal. So the appeal is from 30 days from the 12th. We have until October 12.
We will get those exact dates for you, but the 90 days begins, or the 30-day window begins on the 91st day. After, the 90-day is when that became, the Planning Commission's became rule of law. I, I believe that staff received the appeal on June 12, and, and so we take that through the 90 days. I believe that takes us to September 10, and then the 91st day would be September 11. And so that's the first day of the 30-day window for an appeal to Circuit Court. But we will, staff will follow up with you tomorrow to give you the exact dates on that. But we are in that 30-day window now. I can say that definitively. Circuit Court would be the appeal, the next step for the appeal process. It would be appealing of the Planning Commission's decision.
Okay. That's where we are, so we'll, we're going to learn a lot through this process, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our commission priorities and give a mid-year report that we do every year with that. Okay, so this is distographic of our, overview of our process. So we always start with the Board of Commissioners retreat, and from there, we work into the priority adoption. Now we're in implementation and the communication and reporting piece. On the implementation, we work through our budget process.
Go ahead, continue. I'll get it. Go ahead.
We work through our budget process and staff assignments so that we can make great progress on the commission priorities. And now we're into communication and reporting, and everything I'll be talking about today is available on our website at padukaky.gov/commissionpriorities, including the full report. Thank you. So the Board adopted 10 commission priorities and five continuous improvement items. I grouped the presentation a little bit differently today, so I won't be necessarily hitting every single priority, just the big highlights. So if there are any questions or anything you would like to speak about specifically, just feel free to jump in. And like I said, the full report is available online. Okay, so we'll dive in. What I wanted to start with is these are projects that are really transformative, in my mind, they're transformative capital projects that have been on the commission priorities for a number of years, and so we're pretty far into those. So a great example, Lease Department, and is really critical to public safety needs for the city and the county. The completion for that, we're looking at March of 2026 for the project closeout. So that's a, that's a really significant project that has been on our priorities for a number of years. Now I want to touch on the Riverfront Build Grant. So for some highlights for this project is we did secure funding from the state, $3.5 million. The project has been bid out, and we're currently reviewing those bids. So that's another item that has been on our commission priorities, and that process is well underway. Anything on those that you'd like to speak on?
Well, actually, we're in competitive negotiation on the bid that we did receive on that, and so we look to have an update at the next commission meeting for that.
Those are, those are three huge projects. I mean, you know, I like to skip over them.
That's right.
You know, Paducah Sports Park, you know, and with the county. You know, Paducah Sports Park, you know, and with the county, that's a $65 million project. They're moving dirt. And a lot of people are excited about it. 911, certainly not, hasn't gotten as much press, but it's a $10 million project that really upgrades the 911 system in our community that we've been needing to do, some people say since 2013. So where we had somewhere around 70% coverage in the county, city-county on 911, and we're taking that to 95%. So that's a big thing. And the Riverfront Build Grant, man, this is a project that, it's been a labor of love, you know. Senator McConnell actually helped us get the original $10.7 million build grant. We then got $3.5 million from the state of Kentucky. And we're putting in some of our own money. The project came in over budget, and so we're working through a negotiating process to try to bring it down in line so we can get started on it as soon as possible. But that project, that Riverfront project is going to change the face of our riverfront. And it's going to, it's going to be a huge thing for generations to come because, you know, we are a river town. I mean, and our riverfront is really what defines us. And so we've, you know, we've got barbecue on the river starting this week. You know, people don't like walking in gravel. I think we all know that, none of us do. And so, you know, this project is really going to help us once we get it done. It's going to take a little time, like everything, but, okay, that's all.
No, that's great, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
I'm not as passionate as you, Pastor, but.
Well, I think you're right, it's important because they're very transformative, and they've been commission priorities for a number of years. And so these are pretty successful items we've been working through.
Okay.
Now I want to talk about a little bit about some kind of big upcoming projects. These are maybe newer commission priorities, so some of them we're still getting organized. Some have some big milestones coming up, so these are kind of what I wrap my brain around, are some big upcoming projects. So we're working through the Greenway Trail Extension on the south side. We have a grant with the National Park Service. We have a very engaged steering committee. We've had public meetings, I think later on, I said there's over 500 engagements through surveys and people attending public meetings. So this is a really exciting, of course, that's another love, really well-loved and used community asset. So figuring out how we can extend it to the south side and loop back towards Noble Park and the existing Greenway Trail is really important. Do you want me to hit through all of these and then you can speak to them?
Sure.
Okay. So with Hotel Metropolitan, this is also a project that is well underway. We have exciting news with the Mellon Foundation grant for 1.34 million, and then the city support, of course, this first year, we're looking at 250,000. But that will be very significant, you know, for the future of Hotel Metropolitan. We're currently working on a co-stewardship agreement with them, and that will be, you know, we're working through that with them now. So that is, again, a newer one, but we've been able to make great progress in that area. And community signage is probably the newest one on the commission priorities. This is one we're really getting organized around. It deals with neighborhood signage, highway signage, and entryway signage, which are, you know, when you really dig in, are pretty big projects. So with neighborhood signage, the planning department is working through that. We're talking about entryway signs to all the neighborhoods and then also exploring some caps. You can't, this picture turned out really small, but that's an existing one, I think in Lower Town, where you can kind of see up on top of the street, there's a little arch there. So that's an example of a cap on streets that we're exploring. With highway signage, that's really preliminary. We've done some research on how other communities funded their highway signage. I think there was an example from Bowling Green that came up specific to this. And then with the entryway signage, we've been working with the Chair of the Civic Beautification Board, and she's actually put great effort into going around and looking at all of our entry signage, looking at what needs to be done, and we're going to get together with her to see how the city can partner with any upgrades or landscaping that needs to happen around the entryway signage.
They need more than just landscaping. The entrance signs need a lot of work.
Yeah.
And I've sent pictures before. I mean, some of them, like Bowling Green in Warren County, are beautiful, especially a couple of them on the interstate, and they're joint projects. Now, some are with Corvette, or some are with Western Tech University, but I just feel like, could we raise some private dollars? Or could we go in with the county for at least one or two along the interstate? That's Paducah-McCraken County that are just, those are so appealing and eye-catching and stunning, quite frankly.
I agree.
I really would like to see that, the entrance sign is more of an overhaul than just, I mean, maybe we just need to do some little work right now, but, I mean, they look bad in most of the areas. They've grown up over where it says welcome and all of that. So I'd just like to see those maybe kept, but while we're doing a full study on how we could overhaul that. And I know at one point I told you I was going to do that, but look, call Bowling Green, see how much it costs.
Well, we've done that. Yeah, it's multi-millions.
I know it is, I know. When we were there, they raised a lot of money to do it. I understand that, but is there something we could do just?
So that in itself is not, this is the way I perceive it, that in itself, that project, pretty significant dollars to do that. And we may have to raise some private dollars as well, you know, I'm not. So we need a plan on that, a strategy, an approach. There's been some discussion that's gone on in the community about it, but nothing's really kind of come together, so. Okay. Keep going.
All right, so then I want to talk about a couple of focus areas, talk about south side first and then downtown. So, you know, with south side, I thought it was worth talking a little bit about our incentives. Of course, you know, one of the commission priorities is for those to be under review, and those currently are, to make sure that we're achieving the outcomes we really want related to housing and economic development. But I did want to give you an update that we've had $52,000 in residential grants that have leveraged $256,000 in private investment. And that house is a good example, that's the first new build, that's a Paducah Alliance of Neighbors House and on Oscar Cross. So we have a new construction that has utilized the incentives and then, you know, some other households that have. We've also used $73,000 in commercial and business grants that have leveraged $480,000 of private investment. And that picture on the bottom left is a business that took advantage of beautification and the roof grant. So we do have businesses and houses using the grants, but we are, or the incentives, I should say, but we are still reviewing those to see if that is the impact we truly want to have, for sure.
What is that business? Where is it?
Oh, hang on.
You may not have that at your fingertips.
I do.
Is it Mexican or?
It is. And it's across from Bob's Drive-In.
Yeah, it's across from Bob's Drive-In? Okay. Great, good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Across the street from it.
Right.
Oh, you know what, I don't have the name of it. And it looks like Maria, I just have the information on the beautification and the roof grant, but not the name of the business. But I will show you this, you know, I'll pass this around, this does have a picture of the before that I think is worth taking a look.
So directionally, I think we're headed in the right direction, but I don't think we are there.
Correct.
You know, with our grants, you know, the way that we are providing grants to people. We just, I don't know what the answer is, but we just haven't gotten there yet. And we've got $1 million put in the budget.
Yep.
And we want to spend that money to, you know, to upgrade our neighborhoods. And so I think the challenge to planning, you know, and whoever, you know, as a group, our staff, is to figure out how we can spend that money and make something happen.
That's right.
And so we've been, you know, in fairness to everybody, we've been talking about this.
That's right.
For well over a year.
That's right.
And I think, I mean, I know Carol, Ms. Galt, just started, you know, in a row, but we want to spend that money.
Understood, and you know, we have the history with Fountain Avenue and Lower Town, so we, that's what we've been talking about, is putting together a neighborhood plan, of course, you know, that would be specific to the other neighborhoods because what worked over there might not necessarily work in all areas of town. But that's the approach we're taking, is working with an expert in that area to revamp our incentives and look at how we can make the most impact with that money.
What worked in Fountain Avenue, I'm convinced, will not work in the south side. I mean, I'm just, I just think it's different neighborhoods, it's required more investment, it's different. And, so. All right.
The other thing I wanted to highlight, just a couple of amenities, so we, there's a Boulevard, Walter Jotun is up there, and we are working with Paducah Power to put in new streetlights and decorations, so that will be a really nice enhancement to that area. Another newer commission priority is the community gardens in the south side. So Commissioner Henderson did a ride-along with some of our staff and identified some properties. They're currently looking at those properties and determining how to, what specific needs each of those sites has so that we can move forward. But that's also a new one that's taken us some time to organize and get going. So I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add since you were on those ride-alongs.
I think it's time to get it going. No, I'm good, thank you.
Don't quote me.
I think we agree. Yeah, I think we agree.
You didn't have much time, Carol, to, you know, to kind of like glow in the spotlight back there.
It's okay, but we're going to spend that thing.
Thank you, thank you.
So another focus area is downtown. And, you know, one thing I really wanted to make sure we talked about is I thought, I want to focus on amenities. I thought downtown looked great this spring. We had public works and parks put a lot of effort in. We got the pansies, the plants looked really nice. And we're working on the next iteration of that, which is we have new benches and trash cans to put out that will look great. So we're trying to get through barbecue on the river and then focus on putting the new trash cans out is our first goal, and then the benches. So that will be a really nice upgrade to downtown. Of course, our new planning director has great experiences in downtown and Main Street, so she has some, her and our downtown development specialists have some great things planned for fall. They have a promotional campaign where every step tells a story. They're going to highlight businesses downtown. We have some nice fall decor to really, coming to really drive people downtown and have it be a nice experience. I also wanted to mention that, bring up the TIF, you know, even with the dissolution of the, or dissolving the Wayland partnership, our TIF is on track, we've had 18 million in investment, and so that next target is, I think, spring of 2025, where we need to have 20 million to activate the state portion, so we are on target with that.
Yeah, very good. So, you know, talking about downtown, you can't talk about downtown without, you know, without, you know, mentioning the city block project that did not come to fruition, and so we've got to determine what the next steps are, you know, we're, you know, we want to go through a process with that. I think we need to listen carefully to what, you know, folks think, you know, about that, but also see, you know, exactly what we could do to activate, you know, that piece of property down there. And I think one of the things that we talked about publicly, we haven't talked about it a lot, but that piece of property that's closest to Broadway, you know, that has been undeveloped, unimproved, I guess, is the right way, you know, we need to figure, we need.
Yeah, it's a very bad disrepair.
Great, good.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to talk a little bit about development in the city, and this hits really on several priorities. First of all, that on the left-hand side there is the underground storage tank that was removed from the Catterjohn site. So, of course, you know, we demolished those buildings, we're going through some environmental and preparing it for some environmental analysis, preparing it for redevelopment. We've also been working on, you know, what is the process, whether it's an RFP or an RFI, to where are interested in for that property and what they would propose, focusing on housing is what we've been talking about. And then on the right-hand side over there, that is that incremental development workshop that was this spring. I think several of you attended. We had 64 participants, and that's really was focused on helping grow local developers, and I heard great feedback from that. So I really wanted to highlight that because that seems like a long time ago, but that was this year as part of this commission priorities.
Actually, we had a couple of developers that attended that. I mean, young, small business people that became developers, so that was successful. Now, I ask a question, what is the timetable for getting the environmental work finished on that Catterjohn lot so we can get that turned around?
So we've done initial environmental assessment, I think there was about 30 sites. They're having to come back and do a few more based on the feedback that we got from initial. A couple of the samplings were outside of norms, and so while we don't think we'll have to do a wholesale rehab or environmental, you know, capping and things like that, there are some that are outside of the federal and state norms that additional sampling will give us that. They are scheduled right now to come back and do the additional sampling. The, don't hold me to the date, but I believe the 27th of this month.
And then after they get that in?
Then we'll know what, we'll be able to, yeah. And so once we get that information, we'll be able to know when we put out an RFI or an RFP that we have that information, this is what we know would have to, you know, to occur from, yeah, deal with.
Okay, thank you.
You know, while we're talking about that, when we put out that RFI, RFP, when we finally get there, you know, we want to make sure that we make that as broad as we possibly can, you know, to get interested developers, you know, that would, you know, we just need to see different creative opportunities, you know, the way we could use that land.
The other thing I wanted to focus on a little bit was the permitting goal. So we have had some significant effort put in in meeting with contractors, architects, engineers, and other communities to gather feedback and implement some improvements based on that feedback. And I wanted to highlight the portal because that's a good example of some of the feedback we've received and some improvements we're able to make. The kickstart was not highlighted on the portal, I think the city manager, that was, you know, found that. So we've added those things, we've identified some other piece of the online permitting services that we are working to improve. We've also done some things like started interdepartmental meetings to talk about permits and projects. So there's been a lot of effort into gathering additional feedback and working on our internal process.
I'll just make a comment about the portal specifically. I mean, I know we're doing some work, you know, to improve in there, but I think, you know, the portal's a great idea. Having people do things online is a great idea, but if they don't know how to use it, or they're not confident about how to use it, then it doesn't do anybody any good.
That's right.
And so I think we have to take it, which I know we're starting to do, we have to take it upon ourselves, you know, to provide training, you know, and if we have to, you know, step.
Yeah, that's right.
People through. I was in the courthouse today, had to renew a license, and some of the fellow in front of me, you know, was, you know, I just overheard him, you know, he was talking about renewing his license, and the lady said, well, you know, you can, you know, you can write a check or you can, you know, you can do it online. And he said, I don't want anything to do with online. You know, so there's, there's, not everybody thinks that way, but, but it's not intuitive to a lot of people, and I think we have to take it upon ourselves to provide support.
And to that point, you know, the team has already been looking at ways to either create or utilize some already created tutorial videos and put them up as well that steps through what that came out, you know, conversation that we had as a team meeting a couple of weeks ago, and so they're beginning to look at that as well.
And then we did add a position to the budget this year for kind of that permitting liaison. And so that's something, you know, I could see a role that position potentially assisting with as well.
Okay.
Okay.
One comment, and that is, just, I know on the process, and we've mentioned this a couple of times, but, you know, they talk about information gathering, where we get information from the public, listening and community feedback. I mean, just make a comment, you know, there's ways to get a halt of all of us. I know my phone number's on city website and all, so, I mean, anyone has anything, you know, I do answer the phone, and I answer emails, and I'm sure everyone else here does too. So we're always in a listening mode, so sometimes people say, well, they did this, and, you know, they didn't really ask me about it and all. And, I mean, people have an opportunity to express their opinion. And I mean, just people have an opportunity to express their opinions on things. So that's just kind of a blanket comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. I wanted to focus on inclusion next. So we have the Human Rights Commission that is populated and functioning. They had their fair housing luncheon this spring that over 150 people attended. I thought that was very successful and several of you were there as well. We have our DE and I specialist, she just hit her six-month mark. So she's been really hitting the ground running with getting some certifications, doing presentations, helping with recruitment, city recruitment into city positions. So, you know, now she's really going to be looking at, in addition to partnering with agencies, working through our internal training and different trainings that will be required of city employees, that type of thing. So she just hit her six-month mark. I think she's done a lot in the six months, but we have a long way to go and a lot more work to do.
I was excited. I think yesterday I received a flyer in Messenger and the city is a part of the first heritage week that's coming. And I thought that was, that was great. I think it's October the 5th?
I think at the Civic Center.
At the Civic, October the 5th? From 2 to 5.
Oh, it's there, yeah, it's all right.
Yeah, and I just thought that was great. That was exciting to see.
Yeah, I agree with you. Okay, just have a couple more little information to go over. I did want to talk about some promotional efforts related to the commission priorities. One has been ongoing. That's, of course, the mental health awareness. We did a second bus wrapping. We had some social media campaign that reached over 20,000 people. So that, and then we, of course, work internally with our employees. So that's a commission priority that I think has pretty good traction and wanted to highlight the bus wrapping. Also, wanted to highlight a new initiative. This is new this year called What Makes Paducah Special? So our communications manager put out a survey and we received 78 responses. And we're actually, she's looking at starting a campaign with 17 testimonials from city residents about what makes Paducah special. And so when I was kind of filtering through what she's planning to highlight, it talks about Paducah being friendly and charming and historic and all those things that we really think about with our community. So you'll see a campaign this fall hearing from city residents about what makes Paducah special.
Very good, because it is a very special community, so.
And then finally, I just wanted to hit, you know, a couple of high-level highlights that I think it lost some time. So when we were adopting the budget, there was, you know, we, we always staff before we bring out proposed budget, we always go through the commission priorities and allocate resources. So we have $11 million for funding for commission priorities in this new fiscal year. And I wanted to highlight $5 million for outside funding for priority. So that includes the build grant from the state, and that's just kind of the new money we've received recently. So the, the build grant, the Hotel Metropolitan with Mellon Foundation, that doesn't include the Paul Bruin Grant we just got. So that's a moving target, but I wanted to highlight those two large items. Really to, I wanted to mention that we've had, you know, over 500 interactions on the Greenway Trail Master Plan. That's, the public participation part is really important for that project. We're putting a significant amount of effort into that. And then, you know, I want to mention the hi, the private development from South Side incentives of about $700,000 when you put the residential and the commercial businesses together. So it's just some nice numbers for you to kind of wrap up our mid-year where we are right now. And, oh, you know, on the commission priorities, I did want to mention too, that $11 million, I didn't call it out separately, but that does include the Stormwater Project over on 24th Street. There's the Detention Basin and then some street improvements that I think Paducah Water may be over there already working. I was over there earlier this week. So it does also include funding for a Stormwater Project.
That it?
That's it. The full report's available online unless there's anything anyone else wants to hit that I did not, that I didn't mention.
This is good, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. I know you, you write hurt on the commission priorities and we all appreciate that because we go through a significant effort, you know, to try to get us all together on those and appreciate your help.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort with the whole organization for it.
Right.
So, thank you.
Okay, great. We'll turn to comments. Any comments from the city manager?
Mayor Commission, you'll get some more information, but just want to let you know, late yesterday, we received, or I received notice from HUD that we are being considered under the CDBG program to be listing, listed in fiscal year '25 as an entitlement community, which is, is very, you know, very few communities in the, in the Commonwealth actually reach that status. And basically what it does, it looks at the Metropolitan Statistical Area or MSA and it's grown to such a number that we meet the threshold now to where, under the Community Development Block Grant Program, we, if, if approved, we would be eligible for direct appropriations from HUD on an annual basis. And so that's, that's pretty exciting. It talks about the growth of our region and the, and the community in relationship to that because you do have to have that, that number. And we'll be bringing something at the October 8th for you to officially act on that. But we're excited to announce that, that looks like, at least we're being considered for the fiscal year '25 budget to be listed as a CDBG entitlement community. And if that comes to fruition, then, you know, probably an additional $450,000 in the next fiscal year that we would come in for CDBG-related activities. And we would not have to be competitive for those, those dollars. And so that's, the CDBG program has at its basis 80% directed towards low to moderate income individuals to do projects in, in that area. But there's some national priorities that, that hit along with that and so-
So would that focus on the housing authority or-
No, it would come to us, but we could do different projects. It would not go to, to the housing. It would be, so right now, we, we have to make an application to the state. We're in a small cities program is what it's considered. And we have to be competitive with other communities across the Commonwealth to, that we make an application to department local government for, for those types. It used to be, you know, housing initiatives years ago, you know, the city did a lot of CDBG programs under that. So it would not, you know, again, as a direct appropriation, we still have some work to do. We have to put together some, some comprehensive planning, things like that. But it does free up our ability to get some of those funds and direct appropriations. So I was excited and pleasantly surprised to get that yesterday, so.
So maybe if we're gonna have to prove it on October 8th, maybe you could give us some-
I'll be sending out some more information.
Information about how, how we might use it, you know, so we could get our, wrap our heads around it a little bit.
Hope's been working on a few slides for me and I'll be distributing that tomorrow afternoon to you.
Okay, great. Comments from any commissioners? Okay, we do have an executive session tonight. And we're gonna go into executive session and I do anticipate an action in coming out. So I would ask our city clerk, please read the motion.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic: A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Still moved?
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.[1118.92]
a Future Date to the Board of Commissioners for Determination of Final Action." a Future Date to the Board of Commissioners for Determination of Final Action.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll. So moved.
Commissioner Gess? Second.
Aye.
Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Bray? Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Just give the second for, make sure the video is back on for our public out there and that we are back in regular session, having exit executive session. And, Madam Clerk, we have a resolution to read.
Please, please read the resolution.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled: "A Municipal Order Acknowledging the Intent of the Paducah Board of Commissioners to Authorize the Mayor and City Manager to Negotiate in Good Faith a Development Agreement with National Hospitality LLC for the Construction of a Hotel on Certain Real Property Currently Owned by the City of Paducah, with Said Development Agreement to be presented at a future date to the Board of Commissioners for Determination of Final Action.
So moved.
Second.
So let's just discuss it a little bit. This is a hotel that we're very excited about. It'll be located next to the Holiday Inn. It's on property that the city owns. The anticipation, you know, is that it'll be 120 rooms. And we haven't finalized it yet, but we are working very closely to get this finalized soon. And I think it, I think it confirms the growth, you know, that this community is having, and also the impact that the Paducah Sports Park is gonna have on the need for hotel rooms going forward. So it's, it's very positive for the community. It's positive for all of us. Any comments from anybody else? Great.
And the official location, as it is, under the McCracken County PVA, is 519 North Third Street.
Okay, please call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right.